All right, welcome Woodbury to a village board meeting of September 25th, 2025. Joining us tonight to serve as our junior deputy mayor is Nate Cassidy. I'll have you go up to the mic and Nate is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And of course, our last meeting was canceled due to the nine eleven ceremony downstairs, which our fire department did a wonderful job hosting. So we will have a moment of silence for everyone lost on that fateful day 24 years ago. So Nate, will everyone please rise? And Nate, take it away.
Please put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. So Nate did a wonderful job, far better than his dad would have done if he was standing up here. So. We've got something for you because we just don't have you come here and perform work without actually doing some, you know, giving you something in return. So first, we've got a certificate for you honoring you as our junior deputy mayor. And then also, this may now be, looks a little big. Yeah, maybe. He'll grow into it. So I was, I received a wet down t-shirt from our firemen from their wet down a few weeks ago, and it would be my honor to give it to you to wear as you wish. There you go, buddy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, jumping right in, introducing the local law four of 2025, amending the village comprehensive plan. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introducing local law four of 2025, the purpose of ensuring, assuring full opportunity for citizen participation in the preparation of the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on April 10th, 2025. So the drawings are ready for this project from Lankin Tully, but we do have a new attorney here this evening, Lino Shoretto. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome him aboard. By the way, I didn't mention this, but it's six months to St. Patrick's Day, so that's why the green jacket is out. And I promised my wife I would drain every dollar that I spent on this jacket, so just putting that out there. Anyway, council has asked me to move this public hearing a month out. Would work for you? So does anybody in the public wish to speak on this? Okay. I have motion in a second to carry this over to our October 23rd meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hardship moratorium waiver request from the New York State Thruway Authority. A public hearing is being held. Go ahead, you might as well get moving. To entertain public comments for requested relief from local law nine of 2024 for property located at 33134 Route 17. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May 1st, 2025. So introduce yourself and the floor is yours.
All right. Always, uh, kind of the microphone, you'll have to make sure you're talking to it, I'm reading the notes.
You could, I would, if I'm you, I'm taking it out of there because you're incredibly tall.
All right.
It's, it's something I wish I was gifted with. Unfortunately not. It's just slideshows.
All right. I don't want to break things in your new room. All right. So my name is Todd Gold. I am the Director of Government Relations with the New York State Thruway Authority. So good evening, Mayor Giacomoza and Village Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the village board again as it relates to the Thruway Authority's hardship waiver application, requesting relief from the village's local law that contains a moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals. There is a lack of potable water at the Harriman Maintenance Facility, and the current moratorium inhibits our ability to connect to a municipal water source. To show the importance of municipal water to our facility, in 2016, the Orange County Department of Health recommended that the facility connect to a municipal water supply as soon as possible. Since that time, the authority sought a resolution with the village. The Harriman Maintenance Facility has been at this location since the thruway was constructed more than 70 years ago, and it has been without potable water for more than two decades. This facility is operated solely for the public good to facilitate highway operations for the safety of motorists traveling in and through the region. We are here this evening seeking a vote on the Thruway Authority's hardship waiver from the moratorium and approval by the board allowing the mayor to finalize a three-way agreement among the Thruway Authority, the Village of Woodbury, and Woodbury Common for connecting to municipal water through the common. Since we last appeared before the board in January 2024, there has been many conversations and emails between the Thruway Authority and the village representatives, which included the village engineer. During this almost two-year period, we've had very productive communication resulting in the village's questions and concerns being addressed. At this time, we are unaware of any outstanding questions or engineering issues that would prevent the board from approving the hardship waiver. I believe that the village recognizes the important role that our Harriman Maintenance Facility plays in the community. Work performed out of this facility includes road maintenance along with treating and clearing of the thruway during snow and ice season. The Thruway Authority and the village has worked diligently to ensure the moratorium goals and other environmental aspects are addressed in the draft agreement. These points include metering Thruway Authority use, decommissioning upon connection to municipal water, our well, limiting truck washing during water restrictions, penalties if water use exceeds agreed upon limits, and the connection project will be fully funded by the Thruway Authority. Based on our discussions, the mayor, Woodbury Common, and the village attorney were sent a red line draft agreement last month, and it varies slightly from the draft agreement that was part of the village board meeting document package. We believe the draft agreement addresses everything we've discussed. The waiver is warranted for the following reasons. Unnecessary and extraordinary hardship it creates for the Thruway Authority. For example, employees at the facility are provided with bottled water for drinking, and the facility has a disinfecting system allowing the water to be used only for hand and dishwashing. In contrast, with the other 20 maintenance sections, employees at the Harriman Maintenance Facility are not permitted to shower because of the condition of the water. Showering by employees at our maintenance facility is often necessary with staff working in extreme heat, with asphalt, and 16-hour shifts during the winter. Providing bottled water and using a disinfecting system are not long-term viable and sustainable approaches for operating this facility, especially when clean, regulated municipal water is nearby. The village's moratorium exempts Village of Woodbury and Town of Woodbury projects, rightfully showing that government work is important and should not continue, and should continue unimpeded. The authority also provides essential government work comparable to the village and the town. Lastly, regarding the standard of review and substantive requirements, we believe that the village's failure to grant a waiver will cause the authority a continued extraordinary hardship because the facility employees will not have potable water from a continuously reliable source. The village's grant of a waiver will not have an adverse effect upon the goals or objectives of the village to protect and preserve water resources of the village. Our petition does not undermine the village's purpose of enacting the moratorium, nor does it challenge the status quo because of the public safety, governmental function, and the unique public purpose of this facility. The waiver is sought for an action which is harmonious with neighboring uses and community planning efforts. This facility is an integral part of the community and for the residents who are employed by the authority and working at the facility. The people working at the Harriman Maintenance Facility are providing valuable safety services to the community and deserve access to potable water. Our hardship is not the result of delay, action, or inaction by the authority and has not been self-created. Well water is not a viable source, and the village has denied us access to its municipal water supply. No other viable and reasonable alternatives are available to get potable water to this facility. A connection other than through Woodbury Common is not practical, given the distance and construction, construction requirements to access municipal water from other locations. Connecting through Woodbury Common is the least disruptive approach to getting water to the employees at the Harriman Maintenance Facility. The connection will be fully funded at the authority's expense and will not disrupt traffic in the area because the connection will be made underground. Thank you for your time and consideration of this waiver that will provide potable water to the dedicated public servants at this facility. Thank you for your time.
All right, stay there. Anyone from the board with questions? Starting at the far end with Trustee Fryban.
Testing. I think it's, I think it's working now. Thank you, Mr. Lo, appreciate the, the comments. I have previously, over the past two years, supported this connection. The moratorium cited the basis for the moratorium is in effect that what, there isn't enough water to continue to service all the applications. However, this last year, I've asked for some height, some studies that were done and were being done by the village. I have, I had not received anything until Mickey Phillips did provide me with some information, citing from the New York, this is a report to New York State Department of Health Bureau of Water Supply Protection, which actually.
Measured the daily usage on each well and its productive well production capacity. This was done in the dry month of June to July. During that time, the, the village pumped a total of 33 million, over 33 million gallons of water. The actual capacity of the system now, without well 11 in service, is 44,160,000 gallons. So at this point, we're only pumping at 74% of capacity, therefore, I think it's imperative that we provide the employees of that with the requested water, and I would therefore recommend that we do grant the request as stated.
Trustee Fabro.
This is actually a question to our attorney, Lino. So I know when Kelly was still on the board, we were basically finishing, I believe, between, maybe, I think we were waiting on the comments to get back to us. Have we now heard back from, already we need to hear back from with the three parties in this agreement?
So the answer to your answer is no, in terms of what I have to review. So I know we've had discussions with the authority already this evening. I had discussion with them, which I'll follow up with the board and the committee have discussion, but given that I'm new as a new attorney, the fire council did send me, I can tell this is where you've already much documentation, like this has been going on for some time, which I have almost reviewed, but not finished by review. So part of the reason for what I would ask for, I would recommend, uh, pay or issue this evening is again, just to show the German of this. I mean, you could be welcome, those are the parents, I understand that they're going on a lot, and that's what was prerogative, and what I would recommend is just to give council some time to review the latest red line, and then we can make the determination at the next event, either the village or the board. I recommend, because yes, these projects were used to provide to me, so I don't make any decisions until this evening, because I still have to review it. I'm sure, I'm sure Kelly did a fine job, I know Kelly, but again, I have to review the work and the red lines that were presented to her by the Thruway Authority, and I explained that to the representatives here this evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
You have any other questions?
I believe that's my only question, thank you.
Susan?
Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but although we may be at 74%, okay, based on his report, isn't that extra 25 or 26% accounting for the projects that are going to, that have gone through the secret process and going to come online? For instance, like our hotel up at the shops of Woodbury, our hotel at Estrada.
So basically, right now, with all two projects, right now, we're 620,000 gallons a day away from meeting 10 state standards.
From, say that again, from?
10 state standards, we are 620,000 gallons a day away from meeting that standard.
Okay.
So I don't know where he has his information from, I don't know.
Our State Department of Health, what do you file?
And how many gallons per day are you proposing that you're going to use?
As we've outlined in the draft agreement, it's 2,000 gallons a day.
So 60,000 gallons a month, 720,000 gallons per year.
To, to serve, you know, the important government function that this facility does undertake on a daily, weekly, monthly, annual basis.
Trustee Serean, Deputy Mayor Furelli.
Yeah, I just have one question regarding the gallons per day. It says here, I see something, five to 7,000 gallons per day, and you just said 2,000, so which one is the accurate number?
So when we.
I don't think I'm guessing at this point, but.
So when we originally started our conversations, that was an original estimate that we've updated and provided 2,000 gallons in the draft agreement, and that would be the number that we would be held to.
So that's about five average households a day.
Right.
Worth of water. Okay. At 440 on a four bedroom, let's say.
It's 440 a day for four bedrooms.
Well, 110 per bedroom, so.
All right, so I don't know if you heard that, that's the equivalent of about four houses.
Five houses.
Five houses a day, the 2,000 gallons.
Okay, that's really the only question I have.
Okay. Okay. What I am now going to do is go out to the public. Anyone in the public, starting at the back row, wishing to speak on this application?
Tom Powell, Central Valley.
Yeah, Tommy, Tommy, you know the routine. Go ahead, but I appreciate you talking from the back of the.
Tom Powell, Central Valley. My question is, why don't you drill your own well over there? Second, why aren't they approaching Harriman to tap into Harriman's water? We're just now coming to a break evens point from what your numbers just mentioned. I don't think the Thruway Authority's done anything for the town of Woodbury other than cause, you know, traffic. You don't really care about first responders over here. As a member of the ambulance corps, we've been paid to use, to go out on the highway to address accidents that are happening. So you don't care about the residents, like you stand up here and you speak that you care about us. You don't. Your bottom line is your dollar in your own pocket.
Tommy, Tommy, just address us this way. I, I, he hears you.
The bottom line is the dollar in his own pocket. Whatever the cheapest route, I don't think we should be giving away our, our water. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on, go right ahead. Introduce yourself and then get talk, you can start talking.
My name is Jose Cruz, I live in Highland Mills. I, I, I.
Did you get that?
I like his, um, response because I used to work with Chester EMT, but the fire department, do you use hydrants? How, how is that going to affect our hydrants, or we need them? That's my question.
Well, I was going to wait till, I think, the next item.
Okay. You could wait.
But the point is, the point, the point is the same, right?
Yes.
All right, good evening, Chris Graziano, Highland Mills. I'm going to address this on several levels. Number one, I would recommend the board decline this waiver. Waivers are not meant to avoid financial, just because it's cheaper doesn't mean it's a hardship. Secondly, you do not want to make Woodbury Common into a de facto water supplier. That would not be a good place for the village to be in because of, if there's any water quality issues, who's in, who's on the hook for those water quality issues? Because the water originates in the village, but they're buying their water from another party. So that's really not a liability issue you guys want to get into, ma- making another water provider in the Village of Woodbury. Lastly, I want to address the, um, information that Trustee Fryban just put out there. An average water supply report that's sent in about what we pumped has nothing to do with water supply capacity. It's probably the furthest thing you can possibly get away from what a capacity study is. Capacity is what your max day is, and you need to have your max day with your largest source of water out of service. Max day. Water service, water systems are designed. No, that's not, that's your average day. That's.
By day.
By day, correct. But it's, is your max day for the year, or is it one month?
Well, this is one of the reports.
One, one month, okay, that, that's all I ask, one month, one month. Water supply capacity is also designed, when you design a water system, you design water for your peak hour plus fire flow considerations, you always need to have a buffer in case there's a fire. Third, the water supply in Woodbury is what we pump now, plus what's already been approved through the secret process and allocated to projects that have yet to be built. So just because they're not using 100% now, it doesn't mean 101% wasn't allocated. And we were over 100% allocated before they put well 12 into service. Well 11 is not coming into service for quite some time, as it's got PFOA problems with it, and you're going to have to treat it. That's.
You would, yes, we have to.
Oh, the last set of samples I remember hearing about.
We do have to treat it.
It's on, it, it's got PFOS chemicals.
We've discussed that at various meetings.
No, there's no question degree, the new rule's four. You're not getting any lower than four. Four is the detection limit of the test. So if you detected it, it's there. That's the detection limit for PFOS testing is four. And that's the rule that's going in, that the EPA is putting in. It is a rule. You've got two more years to comply with it. 2028. If you don't have, you don't have to comply by 2028, you're going to have to start issuing warnings to all residents if you use that source, that your source does not comply with the EPA regulations. So those are the thing, reasons why I think, A, the moratorium's a good thing, you're catching up, getting the well online, the maintenance program that was put into place for well rehab and everything else is starting to make a difference. You haven't had a water restriction in two years despite the hot summers, that's because of the moratorium and, and keeping growth responsible until you get water supply that's capable of doing that and sustainable. So I would again, implore the board, from my point of view, as a person who's licensed in the state of New York for the last 35 years with the highest water operator's license you can get in the state of New York, that's my professional opinion, is the, you should not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Susan McConnell, Highland Mills. Just an ignorant resident. I don't have CJ's professional experience. We're talking about potable water. That's to drink, right? What does the Thruway Authority at that station need so much potable water for? Can we not get bottled water?
They wash their trucks and then.
So why are we washing the trucks?
People need to shower, he said. People need to shower, and they, they're going to use that water to wash trucks, but people do need to shower and to drink water, so they are doing this.
I just, again, ignorance. You know, it's, he said for how long, and Fryban said for two years since you've been on the board, you've been trying to advocate for them to get this. I also ask, in that two-year timeframe, did we investigate them drilling a well for the gentlemen or ladies to be able to shower? Do our trucks need to get washed with water that I need for my family to drink? Those are just, again, not professional water management questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else in the public?
Stephen Gargano, Central Valley. I agree with it. Not for nothing, my wife, she works in North Main School District, they all have non-potable water in the entire school district for kids. They cannot drink anything from the fountain. They could use all the non-potable water to wash their hands in the bathroom, they are given, um, there's machines there that you could put that in, and that's for a school district with little kids, not even adults, who are there all day long. All right? Number two is also, what are we using, what do we need to wash trucks? Number three, not for nothing, I mean, I've been to some very nice resorts in Mexico and Cancun, it's all non-potable water to take your shower, and this is the Four Seasons, beautiful places. So unless you're sitting there like this, ah, and drinking it all up, not for nothing, we've all been to some places, even hotels that aren't that clean, we don't open our mouths up and drink it, but it's perfectly fine to wash your hands, wash your car, and shower up and everything else. And also, not for nothing, 20 years of this facility being there, now all of a sudden people need to take showers, now all of a sudden it's a problem? It's just something doesn't smell right? I'm just trying to say, we have other areas that we don't solve for, and this just doesn't make sense. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Valerie Hebbel, I live in Highland Mills. I'm going to go against the grain of everybody, and I say, the Thruway, they do provide a service, they're located in our community, and I think that we should allow them to use their facilities accordingly. I mean, I don't know anything about potable water or anything, I don't know about drilling a well, maybe we should help them to find other sources, I don't know. But I think that they provide a service to the community, and we should accommodate them. They've been waiting quite a long time to, to get that approval, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, anyone else in the public on this?
Ray Hernandez, Highland Mills. I'd like to hear from the department heads, especially the fire department. How is this going to affect safety? Supply, water supply for the fire department? We're, our fire department is very busy responding to accidents, house fires, so I'd like to hear from your department heads on the safety factor in this. Thank you.
I was going to wait till the next item, but it's the same.
It's going to be the same speech, so we'll just transfer it that way also.
So what I'd say, I think, I mean, I actually am an engineer, but I'm, I'm not a water engineer, so I can't comment on, you know, the numbers, what were required, any of the reports, but what I can say is that, you know, with things getting bigger around here and burning hotter and faster, that it is a real safety issue, the requirement for water. So if you guys remember, it was a few years ago now, 20, I think, 23 maybe, on Schuett, we ended up having two houses on fire, right? We needed a tremendous amount of water for that fire, tremendous around, to the point where I think it started to turn brown around there. We almost collapsed the main. 10 years ago, up on Pleasant Road, Pleasant Drive, we did collapse the main. One house, one house on bi-level, not a mansion, not the greens, one bi-level, we collapsed the water main. So that's 10 years ago. So there's a real worry, I think, from my perspective, that when we hook to a hydrant, the fire department expects that hydrant to work. And I think, I don't have that comfort level right now, let alone this, this is one issue, but the bigger issue is the moratorium, I think, in general. And there's a real worry for me that, you know, I'm not going to have the water that I need. So NFPA requires a minimum of 1,000 gallons a minute. With sprinklers, 1,000 gallons a minute. So if you think about that number, one hour, 60,000 gallons, two hours, three hours, all of a sudden, that starts to add up and maybe eat into that deficit that we have. Take a Bond Street, you guys know Bond Street, which is that big blue building crossing like the dugout, that's a massive building. If you don't know what they have in there, they have a lot. If you don't know what they have in there, they have a lot of goods, boxed goods that they bring in, they ship out. That is a tremendous fire load. If something like that goes up and they have sprinklers, I can't imagine the amount of water we would need. I think you would potentially collapse mains, you would have brown water for days, and that's due no fault of the fire departments, but we need that water, right? The Woodbury Commons, the high school, have fire pumps. If those kick on, you're gonna start drawing a lot of water. So again, I don't have the numbers. I just know that you start talking about these developments, I think John would have a better handle, Jason, on numbers, on codes, and I have, I do have, I have a concern, not just through way, I think that's a part of it, I think it's the larger moratorium. So take that, cut it, and then put it, I guess, for the next item. Because it's gonna be the same.
You just saved this time.
Yeah, yeah.
You saved this time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, throughway authority, would you like to speak one last time, or are you okay?
Just, I'll make this quick, because I know you want to continue with your board meeting.
Yep.
I just want to, again, thank you for your time and just stress the importance and the, I think, partnership that the throughway authority has with the village and the towns, and just the services that our staff does provide. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, can I have a motion in a second to continue this to our...
So what do you, so you closed the public hearing?
Closed the public hearing.
So if you're not gonna make it to a nationwide, obviously, because I have to review, I would just, you know, reserve decision until your next available before meeting.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to reserve decision on this moratorium waiver till our October 9th meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it. Okay, moving right along, public hearing, next one. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law eight of 2025, continuing the moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approvals. Public notice was printed in the Times For Record on September 18th. So tonight, I'm gonna start by going out to the board first with their comments on the, on local law eight of 2025 to extend the building moratorium. So, Trustee Fryban. Is the mic on?
It's dead.
It's dead? Jeff, you have any? One mic for four people. We are working on that now.
I would like to just comment briefly on some of the issues that seem to be mixed with the issue of moratorium and Chief Burke's concern with collapsing main. They're entirely different. The question of what capacity can be pulled through a hydrant isn't related to what the capacity of the village's water supply, storage, and pumping capacity is. So I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate the fact that you've had mains collapse. But at this point, the moratorium is on the issue of whether or not people in the village should be allowed to connect to the water system. Under state law, when we became a village, we're required to provide water to our residents. In this case, they have made a case for, in the case... Let's see if it works. Does it work? Testing?
It's on.
I have tried to point out that, in fact, we have the current capacity needed to service the projects that were talked about. No one has presented the hydraulic or hydrological studies that we had asked for each time this came up. The local law is the same every time. We're going to investigate and do studies. Five years we've been investigating and doing studies. I've never heard of a moratorium that survived in New York State more than two years. You either have to do the study and get the water in place, or buy water, or provide water to your residents. And that's what I think we should be doing. We shouldn't be basically picking and choosing on exception basis, we need to have the water. We have a well that's available. It should be put into service. We have the opportunity to do it while the PFAS issues are resolved. But at this point, the water is there, the moratorium should be extended. Should not be extended. It's just not, I do not believe the attorney can find one precedent where a moratorium on development lasted for five years without there being an underlying capital budget to prove that we're gonna get the job done.
I'll just add that, I've been in this for almost 30 years, there have been moratoriums that have lasted, you know, the same amount of time, because I know, I've been involved with them about 25, 30 years ago. So again, there have been moratoriums, there have been moratoriums litigated for the same amount of time. But again, it's a case-by-case determination in terms of whether the moratorium was valid and extended or held. But again, at this point, all that's on the agenda tonight is to extend it for another six months, which your moratorium allows to do. I can't speak to what studies trustee has asked for in the past, because again, I'm new to this party, it's my first night, so, but in terms of extending it, again, I don't see the issue with the term. It's been that way. And I have seen moratoriums longer, because I've been a village attorney, town attorney, and actually litigating these types of cases, I've seen them in my career.
Could you provide, for my benefit, would you provide citations of where they have had a moratorium extended for this period of time? That's all I have on.
All righty, Trustee Fabro.
I guess my questions fall more to Jason. So well 11, we're saying has PFOS, we're working to mitigate that issue, and then potentially per the local law, construct another well eventually?
Well, that needs a building for treatment, which costs millions of dollars.
Yeah. No, I know, it's similar to what Newburgh had, and they had the Army Corps do it for them.
Yeah.
So the well, you're saying the well may or may not be usable, then?
Yes.
Okay, so we may have to search for a clean...
We are in the process of searching for more water, yes. With Miller.
Okay. I believe that's it for now. I'll come back.
All right, Trustee Suriel.
I don't have any questions. My comment is, I'm listening to our department heads, I'm listening to people that are experts in the field, and my priority is to protect and preserve, and our residents come first, and we need to make sure we have enough water. God forbid a fire, those Schuett fires, I remember them. And that is the time when I knocked on a neighbor's door and said, "Turn off your sprinklers." Because they ran them every day, and we were in a moratorium at that time. And I said, "You're not taking this seriously," because so many people could have lost their home if that, it was windy that day too, I remember. So that really drove it home for me, how important it is to protect our water supply. Because we could have had a lot of people lose their home. We had two people, and that's terrible and bad enough, but thank God they have rebuilt, and they have persevered through that. But this is a no-brainer for me. I think we need to extend it for six more months. We are looking for other wells. The PFOS, yes, treatment is available, but it's millions and millions of dollars. So...
Mayor Ferrelli.
Listening to the comments tonight, I'm definitely not comfortable putting a well online that is not good for the people to drink, residents to drink, well 11. If it's overland for PFOS, it's, they won't lie, or get treated, or find a new water source. So that brings me to the belief that I'm in favor of extending the water moratorium because of that, and make sure that we do have that water, and the water that we are putting out here is safe for people to use and cook and shower and drink. That's really all of my comments. I just wanted to make sure it was safe and correct, and we have enough.
Okay. I'll reserve my comments for when we do vote on this, and I just want to go out to the public for comment. So we are commenting on the moratorium. Local law eight. Come on down and let your voices be heard. Do you have anything to say on this? Nothing, you're good? Let's give this break.
Hello, Martha Lopez, Highland Mills. I want to speak tonight about why lifting the water moratorium would be a serious mistake for Woodbury. Two years ago, for the first time in 25 years, a new well was brought online, thanks to the help of the former board. And that's, and because of that, for the past two years, we have not lived under any water restrictions. That was a major accomplishment, but it does not mean our water challenges are solved. The moratorium exists to protect residents when resources are limited, infrastructure is strained, or public health could be at risk. It should never be lifted until we can guarantee that supply and infrastructure are stable and secure. Mr. Fryband mentioned that, a study that says that we use 74% of one well without touching another, another well, yes. And that is the reason why he would like the moratorium to be lifted. That argument is misleading. Water usage isn't steady, it spikes in summer during droughts and emergencies like fires. A system that runs at 74% under normal conditions could hit or exceed full capacity in a crisis. Relying so heavily on one well also creates a single point of failure. If that well becomes contaminated, fails, or requires repairs, the entire community is left vulnerable. That 25%, or 24% buffer is not a cushion we can gamble with when lives and safety are on the line. Public safety must always come first. BJ Mendelson wrote in the latest article about the Jennings Creek Fire last fall, I think we can all remember that, and that was, you know, unfortunate. We have all been warned that wildfires will become more common because of climate change. If the moratorium is lifted now, we risk not having the reserves needed to protect residents and homes during the next emergency. Our infrastructure is also aging and vulnerable. Lifting the moratorium without major upgrades risks breakdowns, contamination, and service interruptions endangering both municipal supply and private wells. And let's be clear, lifting the moratorium would leave taxpayers holding the bill. Developers profit while residents pay higher water bills, higher taxes, and costly emergency repairs, and potentially dangerous situations. The moratorium must remain in place. It is the safeguard protecting Woodbury until we are certain our water supply, infrastructure, and public safety can handle future demand. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on the moratorium? He's tall again. Do not trust tall people.
Chris Graziano, Highland Mills, again. Just to give you a point of contention, a PFOS treatment plant, since I just built 17 of them, and I'm building 32 more, range anywhere from $4 million to $12 million per well. So that's what you're looking at to treat the well, if you want to treat the well. It will be more economical if you can find a new source, because it's cheaper to drill a well than treat for PFOS at this point, because of, excuse me? It's cheaper to drill a, it's as loud as it goes, unless you want to shout.
Yes, you need to keep the mic near you.
All right, it's cheaper to actually drill a well these days because of the crunch going around the entire country of raw materials, supply, carbon, the vessels that it's put in, the prices have skyrocketed for all that material. So if you can find another water source, you're much better off than trying to treat something that you don't use yet. Secondly, again, I'll reiterate, and the folks, the water department have done a fantastic job in getting everything back up and running, and on a really good, steady maintenance program, they've done a fantastic job with that, and I'm glad the board has given them the budget to do this after it was ignored for decades. I know one moratorium that survived more than two years, this one. And there's a reason for it, because it's needed, because we had a deficit, there is a pipeline of projects that were exempted from this moratorium because they were through the secret process when we started the moratorium. So that allocation is still hanging out there. So we don't have as much water as people think we do, until either those projects are built or withdrawn. Those are the two options you have with that, and that's the only thing that changes that ratio. So we need to be very careful what we do. We need to make sure that we can, when we do eventually, get to the point where we can start rolling this back. What?
John needs to, Chris needs to get out of the meeting.
Okay, back to what I'm saying. If and when, when the time comes, it's not gonna be if, it's when the time eventually comes, that it's time to start relaxing the moratorium. It should be done in stages, it should probably be done residential first, and then holding commercial until such time as we can guarantee there's enough supply to supply the bigger and more heavier demands on the system. And I'll just say, reiterating what Chief Burke just said, you know, 1,000 gallons a minute for a residential fire in a development, something like Bond Street, you're talking 3,000 to 5,000 gallons a minute, you need to put that fire out. That's a huge difference. You know, when you start going that, those numbers, you really need as much buffer of supply as you can to be able to put out a fire of that magnitude if it does happen. So you don't want to ever cut it that close. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else in the public on the moratorium?
Good evening, Jacqueline Hernandez, Highland Mills. So as a resident, I am not on the municipal water. I have my own private well. But I did want to speak to the experiences of owning a well. So normally owning a well, as I'm sure the village and the department heads understand, is the water fluctuates depending on availability of water. And that could range from one year to another, depending on the amount of rainfall we get and what filters through the ground. Because some people think, on the days where we have those flash floods, wow, we had a lot of rain. That does nothing for our wells, because there's just not enough time for that water to penetrate the ground. So just in the general idea of like what water, water is a limited resource. And I know that there are some areas in South Booming Grove that's currently going through the experience of not having water. Think of your house. Your house's value comes 100% with water. Without water, your beautiful $600,000 home becomes zero. It's just simple as that. And I have to constantly monitor my well. On the days where we don't have as much water, it's really difficult. My business also is on a well. Sometimes you open up that faucet, and it trickles, and it's really, really scary when you go through an experience where you think, "Am I running out of water?" So in this particular situation, I understand that it feels like, you know, we have water and we can give. I think we need to be very careful about what we're using our water for. The water that we drink, the water that supplies to our small businesses, the water that supplies our homes. You're very fortunate to be on a well, I mean, in municipal, right? Because you don't have to worry about, many of you don't have to worry about these headaches, right? But I worry about it with my family all the time. And understand, the village, the village board, you're responsible for making sure that a town of people, thousands of people in your town, I mean, in the village, has water. That's a big responsibility. And I just want people to understand, this is, it shouldn't be taken lightly. And I just want people to understand, this is, it shouldn't be taken lightly. And although businesses will thrive, we, the people, within our community, has to come first.
Thank you, Jackie.
Susan McConnell, Highland Mills. I've said this before, formerly of South Blooming Grove. I grew up in Merrywald specifically. We had town water. That community was built in the 70s. And I can tell you when my parents sold their house, their town water was brown and contaminated. Their infrastructure was old. And by the time my parents sold, houses were getting knocked down. There was an auto moratorium. And the houses that were being put up were high-density homes. So the water usage was bigger than what the infrastructure could hold. You say we are only using 74%, Mr. Fryband. Sorry. You are saying that you were given a report from someone that states the village is only using 74%. You also say that it's the job of the board to make sure the residents have water. That's me. Your job is to make sure I have water by not overloading the current system so that all the users that are already there can continue to have safe water. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Rhonda Fabro, Highland Mills. I'd like to speak to several points that have been made, one of which was about our taxes and about our residents and how our residents will have to foot the bill. I think that's fear mongering. I also think it's fear mongering when we start talking about South Blooming Grove. We are not living in South Blooming Grove. We do not have high-density housing in Woodbury. I don't know why the residents who come to these meetings think that the board is going to vote for high-density housing or vote against our water moratorium if it's needed. I don't like the finger pointing. I don't like the insinuations. And I think it's anti-Semitic when we bring up South Blooming Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Tommy's on his way.
Tom Powell, Central Valley. Again, they throw around 20 years. Thruway Authority's been there over 70. 1950, they started building a Thruway Authority. You'd think they'd have their own water source by now, all right? And I still don't know why, with the Ramapo River right behind them, they're not drilling a well over there and going after the water out of the Ramapo River, all right? Or tapping into the sewer district and taking the treated water out of the sewer district and using that to clean their equipment. All right, so there's other ways they can get water. And they have been around over, over... I'm not, I don't know the exact year, Mr. Frybrand. Over 50 years there. They started back in the 50s, from what I was told. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa Hins, Highland Mills. As your climate smart person, I don't claim to know what's going on with our wells as far as our capacity. But I just want our board, and I appreciate those that are protecting this water moratorium. It's critical. All you have to do is drive down the road and see what's in our streams. And let you know that what's, like Jackie said, if this high runoff, this high-density rain that we get just riddens off. It does not make it into the stream. It does then not make it into your groundwater. I live on a well also. But your wells that you supply your community with are the same wells. It's the same principle. And without having something in the streams, all you have to do is look, there's no water in the streams. We're eventually going to run out of water down below. My father was a well driller my entire life. We always had to pay attention to our water, and I appreciate those on the board that are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Valerie, you'll be next.
Okay, Antonio...
You want to sit right there, you can. Wait, Valerie, go ahead.
Antonio Cortese, Highland Mills. I'm up here. We are supposed to be stewards of our environment, okay? We're supposed to look out for the future of our children. We're not supposed to be here handing over our water supply to large developers, to people who don't even care about us, people from the outside of our community. We need to take care of our community first. And to point out someone who has concern about our environment and to tell them that they are anti-Semitic because they bring up a neighborhood that's nearby that has problems right now, that's disgusting. I'm sorry. You know what? You cannot shut people down and call them anti-Semitic because they have concern of the environment. This is our future. This is for the people of Woodbury. Okay, I'm tired of this. Don't not gaslight us, okay? We are here, we need a future for our children. Thank you.
Go ahead, Valerie. You're getting there.
Valerie Hebbel, Highland Mills. I'm not against a moratorium for a period of time to find other sources of water and to protect the water that we have. But to have a continuous moratorium for years on end, that also prevents smart development in our community as well. And, you know, I believe that we should also be fostering that as well. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Anyone else in the public? Okay, going once, going twice. God, I didn't get to that three quick enough. Jimmy Ning.
Captain Chaos, Highland Mills. So... Jimmy Ning, Highland Mills. We do this every six months, whether it's water, sewer. And at this point, I'm tired of it. Why don't we just lift this moratorium like certain trustees want to do? And let us go down that path that so many of us are concerned about. This is a public hearing about one issue. But for everyone that's paying attention, it's just not one issue. It's funny how this side speaks about this, this side speaks about that. Last election, protect the reserve, and it was overwhelming. And you do what you do, and I commend you. But to do this every six months, I don't have CJ's expertise, I don't know water. I don't know what the building situation is, I don't know any of this. I don't know what the fire situation is. But I do know math. So we sit here and take 74% and play with this number that, hey, we could go at 26%. But it's not like that. It's fluid. Things changed. And all I've seen from certain individuals is they want to build. Allow them to build. These projects were approved so long ago, between short forms, long forms, there's an agenda to get development going in Woodbury. Fine, for the people coming in, if we could develop and grow, so be it. But on the backs of the residents that live here, that makes no sense to me. Steve, you're looking to knock down your house to put 13,000 square foot hell room? But you ran into an issue with development that flooded you out. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. That we keep doing this and doing this and for the ones that are looking to protect Woodbury, you get attacked. Nonstop, because you're holding up the progress, you're holding up development, you're holding this up. And it is. If you don't think South Blooming Grove is relevant, you're not paying attention. Or you have an agenda you're trying to sell. Okay? If you like seeing that Spiller Truck driving up and down your street, if you want the budget with the village where they have to figure in trucking in water, that's on you. But I didn't come here for that. I had no idea what the situation was, as bad as it was. But you guys have addressed it. Now you got, I believe, these issues with Well 11, whatever it is. But just like the Thruway Authority has an issue with their well. But all we come to realize is water is such a valuable commodity. We can't give it away. And if we're stingy about it and we hold it back and we prolong this moratorium, how does this hurt? I believe, how many residents in Woodbury? I lost count. But how does it hurt the residents that are here, that bought homes here, that are counting on you protecting the water? I really don't care about the guy who bought a plot and is looking to put up a 13,000 square foot house. Or wants to remodel, whatever he wants to do. I don't care. So you want to defend that and all this other nonsense? This isn't racism, this is anti-Semitic. If you had the Chinese, the Koreans come in here that want to, we want this to build over there, whatever. I'd feel the same way. Get your ass out of here. But this is nonsense to come in here, time after time. We have this public hearing, we all say the same thing. I know the faces that are going to say for the moratorium, and I know who's going to try to twist the words to be against the moratorium. But there comes a point where I hope that someday, this five, 10 years from now, we fix the situation where, you know what, you build all you want, okay? You know, whoever your supporters are, get what you're going. But until we get to that point, it makes no sense to question what we're doing. This summer, this summer was the last summer too, we had no restriction. But I remember my first couple of summers here, it was nonstop. Every time I drove by, underwater restriction, underwater restriction, I wish the chief was here. So recently, I've gotten to meet the fire department. An incredible group of young men.
And women. Jennings Creek. And women.
And the women, I apologize, you're right. I can't remember, was, where was it? Was it Warwick or Goshen, you had that battery fire that raged on a couple of years ago?
Warwick.
It's those situations, we're not talking about the single-family home that, you know, you get a little strain. We're getting these bad fires. And I know these first responders. And I would hate the fact that, you know what, we took our 74 capacity and let's get it up to 89, and something happens. You know, who's going to apologize for that? I give you credit, you hesitated. I expected you to go right along with your buddy. But you hesitated because you asked about the situation and you're contemplating whether it's right or wrong. So I'm going to give you credit for that, Matt. But for my community here, I don't even know what the discussion is. Unless you got an agenda to lift the moratorium, there's only one vote. Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing? Want to speak first?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Now to the board.
I'm going to go first. Rhonda, to your point, I take exception to that because I don't know if it's something I said or someone else said, but I'm not trying to fear monger anybody. But when I hear, I know the situation in South Blooming Grove, but what I equate that to here is development. So I'm going to ask you, if this moratorium is lifted, can you name four projects that will materially? Okay, but I'm just saying. So, but four projects that are materially going to affect our water supply if it's lifted. So in... Well, I'm not fear mongering, but in my head, all I think about is if we lift this, there are projects that are approved waiting in the wings for this to be lifted that will materially affect our water supply, like the Woodbury Commons, like the senior housing. All right, well, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm going to speak, I mean, Mr. Frybrand clearly said we should lift it, okay? Like, let's, okay? Right, and that's, and that's fine, that's his opinion.
Trustee Suriel, just stick to your comments there, okay? And do you want to speak on the moratorium as a whole? Just...
I've already spoken.
Okay. All right. Anyone else from the board with comments before I take a vote?
I would like to speak on the moratorium. Matthew Fabro. Unfortunately, Chief Burke left, but I had another question I would like to ask him if there's a suggested, I guess, amount or percentage that we should have set aside for emergencies. I know they vary size, you know, the size of the fires. He was mentioning the warehouse versus a house fire. Vastly different sums of water. But I'm curious if there's some like state or federal standard maybe that we should be meeting or have as a goal in mind in addition to building Well 12? And then if we can mitigate the PFOS issues, hopefully we don't run into more PFOS. I have another question for you as well, Jason. So the moratorium is for an additional six months, and then we have the option to extend another six months, so another year. Do you anticipate that being enough time to get another well done?
No.
So...
And that number that you're talking about is 620,000 gallons a day. That's what we need to get to the state standard.
Right, okay, that was mentioned before.
So having 74%, none of that means anything. It means nothing. We need 620,000 gallons a day with all the currently approved projects. That's what we need.
620,000, and then the Thruway...
That puts people in the safe range of fire protection and so on and so forth.
The Thruway asked for 700-something thousand, was it, yearly?
I'm not sure of their number right off the top of my head, but yes.
Yes, but when you did the math, so it's over basically what Jason said. Okay.
So it's like 60,000 a month times 12, which is like 720,000 roughly.
Noted. Secondly, I'd like to address the crowd. I know we're a community that's very passionate about our resources and our, I guess, community character and identity. And I am too, that's why I ran for this board. I also know, and it's not lost on me, and as probably many of you, as you drove here, there's campaign signs out everywhere. We're clearly in the midst of campaign season. I would ask everybody, you know, opposing viewpoints, what have you, please be respectful of one another. I know it's a very contentious issue, it's a serious one, as we've been debating. And we're going to treat it seriously, as is every member of this board, I'd imagine. And a final point, Jim, can you show me that paper? So this paper is, you said this was a monthly report?
This is the June, which is the dry month.
So this is just one month versus the... Okay, so what, the water department needs or has rather is a more complete picture than just the one month?
This was, I looked at the other data, this is the dry month.
Okay. Would we be open to doing another study once our additional well is online? I mean, should we do a study, Jason, rather is what I'm going to ask you.
We are currently in the process right now, and on September 11th, and we're out in the field looking at water sites. Unfortunately, none of them are owned by the village where there are potential sites. And just another number to throw out to you guys too. That approved number of 620,000 gallons a day, there's also a future number of what's also before to be approved, up for being possibly approved. That then puts you out to 830,000 gallons a day. So 620 isn't even a cure-all. Yeah, that's, 620 just current, current. 830 is what's out to be decided upon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And with that, sorry if you'd like to, a little bit more and then I'm done, you can have the mic after that, sorry. I'd like to say though, with regard to folks coming and speaking, public comment, I know we often blur the line here between, you know, political speech, government speech, campaigning, not campaigning. I'm fine, all for it, you know? Free speech, what have you, come and speak, that's okay. But I do think there's a fair amount of assumptions being made about the various candidates running for the board, myself and others in the crowd. And I just ask folks, please keep an open mind, pay attention to actions, not words, and that's it. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you. Anything to add? No? Okay. All right, I just want to, a couple of things, go over a couple of things.
Excuse me.
Yep.
Might I add some notes here?
Okay.
Because there is certainly some misconception about the comments that the chief made as to fire flows and the issue of wells. The wells produce 1.2 million gallons per day of water. That has nothing to do with fire flow. Fire flow is a question of how much storage you have and how you can move that storage through the system. Chief Burke pointed out that he was collapsing the water mains because of the flow being pulled through that water main. It wasn't that there wasn't water available, it's that the water main wouldn't pull, wouldn't allow the flow that their trucks were pulling. This issue of the moratorium, I believe, is kind of a, it's going to be a continuing problem because in the state of New York, I don't know how many, what percentage of communities actually meet the 10 state standards. Obviously, as someone mentioned, South Blooming Grove doesn't. I'm certain that it's an admirable objective. But the issue here is that we have residents who are in houses now and cannot get water. We have the Thruway Authority, which has been there for, I guess, 80 years, have people that are really having a difficulty in using, in actually using the facility over there. To have people that work as hard as those guys do, you see them out on the roads, they're picking up trash, they're getting hot, but they can't take showers. And why? Because we won't give them a couple of thousand gallons of potable water a day. Now, Mr. Lowell left. But in their original proposal and documentation to the board, they pointed out that their current well is contaminated. As are many of the areas in that part, even Harriman has problem with the contamination in that part. As those of you know that Napira was there, and a lot of that cloud or that pool of contaminated water is moving in our direction, in all directions. So that's why the Thruway Authority can't use their well. They can't drill another well because they'll just get the same water. This is a humanitarian thing. A lot of these people are residents of this community, and they should not have to basically sweat it out and leave and go home to have basically clean people, clean, cleaning, particularly, they work with so much stuff that's contaminated, they're, they pick it up. It's just not a humane approach that we're taking to their request for this exemption. As far as the moratorium is concerned, I'm concerned that unless the attorney can show me that there are routinely five-year moratoriums that prevent people from either getting water or sewer connections to existing systems, this moratorium, local law, if challenged, could result in significant damages being assessed to the village. That's my concern. I don't want to pay for this kind of a miscue, just like the people in Monroe experienced because they kept trying to stop development by withholding approvals. So in this case, I will, as they say, be voting against extending the moratorium for the reasons I've stated and the fact that the documentation is from the New York State Department of Health, it was filed by the village, and the engineering on this shows that we certainly have the capacity without endangering anybody's local water supply.
All right, is that it?
Yep.
All right. So this moratorium did not begin five years ago, it didn't begin six years ago, it began four years ago. Okay? So if you received an email stating that it was six years or longer, that's not the case. Okay? So it's been four years. The reason why we went into that moratorium is when CJ Graziano ran for the board, he ran on water. And he was the one that pushed forward the studies that we did that showed that we were not in compliance and that we were short. If I'm going to sort of dumb down what I'm going to say. That situation has not gotten better. We spent a whole boatload of taxpayer money to do those studies. Roughly about $110,000, I think it was, between the engineers and the hydrogeologists at the time, Bill Cannavan. So we did all our due diligence, and the situation has not improved. We are at a break-even point, I am very proud to say that because we've gotten through two summers now without needing to put water restrictions in place. That was important, that was an important first step. We put the first municipal well online in the history of the village and pretty much the history of Woodbury and the town for 25-plus years that we put that on there. This was a collective effort of CJ, who is a vice president of a water company, and Mickey Phillips and Jason, who both have been in that department for three decades. That is why we put the moratorium in place. That has nothing to do with halting development. Okay? I am not, trustee Frybin loves to mention litigation. I have yet to be sued. The only people we have sued is one company, and that is it. Okay? And I won't go any further than that. So this is a real problem. Okay? We are trying to address it. Part of that is finding sources that we can drill down on. Now, Well 11 was also part of his email. Well 11 is pretty much an afterthought to me because we tested it, tested it twice, and it still came back with higher levels of PFOS than were acceptable to New York State. For us to build a filtration plant was going to cost upwards of $7 million, okay? And it wasn't going to solve our water problems completely because Mickey Phillips, and I think Jason will agree, we probably need to put two more wells online easily. Because the other thing that we voted on earlier in the year was bonding, and part of that bond was putting Am Door Park into the Consolidated Water District. Currently, they are a separate water district of 58 homes, but those 58 homes use almost 2 million gallons of water a year. So that is about to be added to our total sometime in the spring of next year. So this is not something that we are doing to halt development because there is a lot of it coming here. Okay? Phase five of the Commons, Transit Oriented Development, Shops of Woodbury, there's a total of six hotels that want to come here. And nobody uses more hotels than the six, than hotel, nobody uses more water than hotels. Okay? Can't really get there. So, and on top of the filtration, also what comes along with that environmentally is we're getting rid of the filters themselves. Okay? So, which I don't understand completely, like, you're going to burn them? What are you going to do with them? You know? To me, it sounds environmentally bad either way you look at it. So we are not trying to scare anybody with anti-Semitism, but our situation with water has not improved. Our families, we have bigger families living here, we, with this moratorium, allowed anybody who was through the secret process to continue through to get their, whether it be their homes or their businesses, online. A Strata Road Hotel will be, at some point, be booking. Okay? So that means you've got that hotel online. The houses in WP3 are big houses that are also using a lot of water. So, yeah, and they're still building because they're allowed to through the moratorium. So this is a situation that is not getting better. Okay? The hydrogeologist reports are available for the trustees to review. I don't know if they have actually reviewed them. I know, Susan, I know you had reviewed them, I know I've reviewed them, but they are available to be seen at our water department. So I, for one, will be voting to continue the moratorium. Okay? I don't need to use scare tactics or anything else, it just is necessary. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve Local Law 8, introductory Local Law 8. And do I have a second on that? Seconded by trustee Ferrelli. Roll call, Jessica?
We're adopting Local Law 7.
Seven. Twenty-five, twenty-five, yes. And it's introductory Local Law 8. There you go.
So there's a motion by...
Yep. Vic Ferrelli.
We adopt Local Law 7.
Yep.
So trustee Frybin, can we vote?
No.
Trustee Badra?
Aye.
Trustee Suriel?
Aye.
Trustee Ferrelli? Mary J. McCarthy?
Aye. And there you have it. In the rearview mirror. Okay. One last one. So Nate's got to go. I know it's been exciting. I know it's been exciting, you should sleep very easily tonight, so...
Rob's got a good sleep.
Yes, Rob has got an early bedtime. So can I get a big round of applause for Nate? Did you learn anything at all? Not really. He said he didn't learn anything, but he did thoroughly kick my tuchus in tic-tac-toe at least once to start with. He thought you were so smart, but I got you the second time. So thank you, Nate, for joining us. Go to heck home and go to bed. So respectful. Unlike his father. Thank you, Brad. Okay. Public hearing is being held, now this is the first time we're doing this, okay? Public hearing for STR, Short Term Rental Application Objection for 1113 Route 32. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on short-term rental application objection for the property located at 1113 New York Route 32 in Highland Mills. Public notice of something in the Times' record on September 18th. All the property owners within 300 feet of the location were given notice of this public hearing, and proof is said mailings were provided to the village clerk. Okay. Who wants to go first? You're objecting to it, go right ahead. Go ahead. Yep, go ahead. And introduce yourself if you don't know the routine already.
Good evening, my name's Danielle Cruz, and I live near 1113 New York 32. I'm here to strongly oppose the short-term rental permit for that property. The applicant has already been renting it out, and the guests have repeatedly disrupted the neighborhood, blasting loud music, being disrespectful, and creating disturbances that forced me to call the police. This isn't a one-time issue, it's a pattern that's degrading the peace and safety of the community. Do I need to hold it?
Yeah, I was going to say, but try to...
No. We live in a residential area, not a party zone. Approving this permit would reward behavior that's already violating the spirit of our zoning laws and the community standards. I urge the board to deny the application and protect the integrity of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to respond? Is it yours?
Yes.
It is, all right.
Sorry, yeah, we try our best to make sure that there are no disturbances, we continue to remind the people that are there that they should be acting accordingly. We understand that we live in other residential areas and wouldn't want the same with our neighbors, so we're very respectful that, I'm sure, that it hasn't repeated since maybe an incident that all I could remember. But other than that, I don't think there has been any other issues, and I think we continue to keep a high level of standards and attentive to the neighborhood. So we just want to respect the people that live around us and continue. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the board with any questions, starting at the far end?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir?
Isaac Newman.
I have a question. We have another application for a zone change request in that area under old business. Can you explain the relationship of that and your...
This was going to be part of that, but I think what we're doing right now is we're going to get, hopefully this is taken care of as part of the permit, and then we'll decide whether we're going to proceed with that or not. At this point, we've held off.
Okay, so this is the, this one...
113.
113 is one of the two buildings that...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
What about 1115?
Yeah, so 1115, we're at 1115, we currently visit there, we have a secondary helm there, we're actually there now. We use it as our...
So you're not renting it? Because you have a violation for renting it as a short-term rental, right?
Right now?
Yeah.
Are you sure? We have, I never got a violation for that.
They were mailed out at the same time, 1113 and 1115, both were shipped the same day.
Really? Okay. We'll take care of that if that's the case.
Well, I'm asking, are you renting it? As a short-term rental?
We rent the main house, the 1113.
Right.
We don't rent it out, we use it for ourselves, and we also have other people that come by that, like friends and neighbors that, from where we live in North Jersey, that stay with us sometimes, so maybe that's what it's considered.
Okay.
But we don't currently.
Okay. I mean, Danielle, the Cruises have sent a little more detailed information...
Sure.
...that we received about specific complaints in the packet that we received.
Yes.
So it looks like this has been an ongoing process for them with the tenants that you're, I mean, it's, the nature of it is Airbnb, right?
Correct, yes.
Right. So the nature is that, you know, as long as someone pays, you get what you get, right? And they have specific details here about, you know, ATVs running through their property from your tenants, music being very loud.
Those are, those are our ATVs.
What?
Those, those are our ATVs.
Okay.
We drive them sometimes, but we don't, we definitely don't rent those out, I mean, that's not something part of, I think there's a bit of a confusion when we rent it out and when we use it for ourselves. But I don't think we've done that in a while, in fact, I don't have those ATVs anymore.
Okay.
So we understand that. And we do understand that there are other rental...